Bye.
Hey, uh, we're going to meet in the order for the BZA September fifteenth, twenty twenty five. And have a roll call, please.
How far is?
Here.
Here.
Steve Eisenberg. Bill Gallagher.
Here.
Richardson.
There.
Keith Campbell.
Here.
Jim Steel Smith. And Chris Burning is not here.
Hey. Okay, um, if we all stand for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to reply, United States of America, and to the Republic, where it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, creating justice for all.
Good.
I make a motion to approve the agenda with flexibility.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Nice to have it. Yeah, I think, um, we have the minutes from the previous meeting, and I think we've reviewed them offline here from June sixteenth, twenty twenty five, July twenty one, twenty twenty five, and August eighteen, twenty twenty five. Anyone have any questions on those minutes?
I don't believe I had any, it was just a couple. Grammar and spelling.
I went through.
The word, word correctivist of it, I think.
I gave my, yeah, mostly grammar and spelling to Ashley this afternoon, and I think that these reflect that discussion. She's shaking her head, yes. So I'm good with them as a read.
My trust, Steve. I read most of them.
We're getting, uh, for the June sixteenth, twenty twenty five. Sixteen.
Sixteen, twenty, twenty-five minutes. It's, it's corrected.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Nice to have it. July twenty one.
Make a motion through the minutes and lie twenty-one, twenty, twenty, twenty-five as corrected.
I second him.
All in favor?
Aye.
Nice to have it.
Okay.
And August eight, August eighteen, twenty twenty five.
Yeah, make the motion, may approve the minutes, so. Eighteen, twenty, twenty-five as corrected.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Nice to have it. Okay, I think that takes us up to our hearing time. So we have a hearing appeal for application HTBZA twenty-five dash oh seven. For NAF at seven thirty-five P M. Motion for that to go into that hearing. Yep.
Start the hearing for that, which is HTBZA twenty-five dash oh seven.
Next second.
Sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Nice to have it. Okay. Anybody planning to speak tonight? Uh, whoever's planning to speak, could you, could you stand up for a second? Um, you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Can you say truth again?
Please, please, Portland, one South Harrison Street.
Thank you.
Okay, if I, Mr. Chairman just made a couple of comments here.
Sure.
As we enter into this activity. Uh, having been party to this, uh, through the previous hearing and the discussion, the previous, in the previous hearing, uh, we allowed for, uh, this group to come back to us with a proposal in that, you know, in the record, we said that, you know, we accept the fact that there had been non-conforming uses on this property in the past. And, uh, as was spelled out in the previous applications, as well as, uh, witness testimony from the previous owner, uh, and so I guess that's, I would say that's what got us to this point for, uh, the, uh, the NEFs to present a further request, I guess is what we would call this. And this caught me a little by surprise when I saw it, it says, this is a substitution rather than an expanded, you know, a lot of times when we look at variances, it's expanded uses, the size of the activity is going to get larger, the, the land usage involved might be getting larger. But, uh, you know, this, this time around, the language specifically is, uh, uh, to substitute an entirely different type of business, uh, and to allow the creation of a new commercial business on this property, different than what had been operating there in the past. Uh, I'm, I'm concerned, uh, is that given that, you know, this is a substitution, not an expansion, uh, it's a request to operate a substantially different commercial business on the property. Uh, I believe, having read through the, the proposal, that this activity belongs with the zoning commission, not with the BZA. I don't believe that the BZA is the right venue for this discussion. Uh, the scope of what's being requested here is much broader than our last conversations. Uh, we're not frankly equipped here to, to approve a commercial trucking business in Harlem Township from the standpoint of, uh, entrance and egress, safety, fire containment. Uh, I, I believe that this is kind of out of the scope of what the BZA is supposed to be addressing. And so, uh, given that, I mean, I just wanted to put that on the, on the table, on the record, that, uh, I'm just concerned this is the wrong venue, uh, for these folks to be appearing, uh, having now read through the request here. And, and I think again, the key to this is the term substitution. And I've, I've read all of their input that says it's not going to be any more offensive than what, well, the last use of that land was totally in offense. As testified by, uh, Mr. Garrett Bryant in the last hearing and from neighbors who said, well, we didn't even know there was something going on there. But the reason that we're here having these discussions is the nature of all the complaints uh, and concerns about the operation of a commercial trucking business on this land in the AR one residential zone. To be honest, I'd, uh, I'll stop there. That's my point of view on this.
Yeah.
Well, before, before we go too much further, um, I just opened up a letter I just got for the first time here. It said, it says a magistrate's order staying the case pending mediation. You guys aware of this? Um, I'm looking for a date on it, but I'm not seeing that date. Let me read what I got here. So Derek Neff, the appellant versus, uh, borders on appeals, Harlem Township at L. Uh, magistrate's order staying the case pending mediation. This case has stayed for sixty days while the parties pursue mediation or other means resolving this dispute, the court will reactivate this case after sixty days. Uh, it's on Jamie, uh, LaPlante magistrate.
Okay.
And I do not see a date on it. Case number twenty-five C V F zero eight oh nine one five.
Can you read that again?
The case number? Case number twenty-five C V F oh eight oh nine one five. Okay. Do you guys have any information on that?
Yes.
Uh, feel free to to share what you have, or if you would.
I don't really want to talk about the court case. It doesn't have any pertinence on what we're talking about tonight, just, uh, that we're pursuing a, uh, substitution of a non-conforming use in a burden with twenty-four oh three A.
Okay. I have a comment. Any comments back there first?
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm having trouble understanding what this is. Is it saying it's staying our means to resolve this dispute?
Uh, this is Corey, uh, last name Go G O E for the record from the Delaware County Prosecutor's Office. That's an appeal of this board's decision in the previous hearing, uh, which was basically limiting the, uh, non-conforming use at that time to something less than what the applicant was asking for. By giving them the ability or by, by making a finding that there was a non-conforming use, it allows the applicant the ability to be heard on this matter, which is to enlarge the use. But what you have in front of you is just appealing the previous decision in the last hearing.
Okay.
Um, I don't think it has any effect on being able to go forward on this hearing, even though they're related, it's kind of a separate decision. So I think the board can go forward in terms of what's being presented today. I think the reason that is being, uh, held by the court right now is at, at the request of the applicant, because the applicant wanted to see this application through first. Um, because if the, I assume if this application is granted and he's permitted to run his business this way, then the other case becomes somewhat moot and may not need to be seen through. Uh, where if the board denies this applicant's, uh, request in this case, then they may pursue an appeal on the previous decision. So they're related, but I think that the hearing today on this application is something a little bit separate that the board can consider.
Okay, thank you.
Uh huh. Or not.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, for the record, I finally did find a date on it. It's August twenty-first of twenty twenty-five, so what's on it?
And I will just say for purposes of the record, counsel for applicant did speak to myself, uh, with his intentions both to file the appeal and his hope that the court would stay it pending, uh, seeing through this application, because I think this application was already pending in front of this board. So they wanted to make sure that, uh, that case, if it goes forward, is being held until this decision was made, just so that everything can be finalized, and I think the applicant would know how to proceed.
Mm-hmm. That's fine.
That makes more sense.
Good.
Yeah. So I thought it was impacting where we're going tonight. Okay. Good deal. All right, that's where, that's where we're at.
Keith. Okay, my, my concern about this.
I don't think so.
If, my, my concerns when I was reading the application and, uh, some of the things that, that Mr. Garrett did there, which is a lot different to what the applicant, applicant's applying for. I, I see issues with, there's no septic system there, so there's no ways to get rid of their waste. Uh, if there's no restroom for their employees or anything like that. Uh, when Mr. Garrett worked there, he had his residence next door, he was a, able to walk back and forth or whatever. That's not there any longer. Uh, when you're looking at repairing trucks and stuff, you have chemicals, you have diesel fuel, uh, antifreeze, motor oil, all that stuff has to be taken care of. And, and that's a whole lot greater than what Mr. Garrett was doing. Uh, he was a, a loner pretty much, or him and, and, and maybe someone was helping him, was experimenting with stuff, but they, they had, you know, the, the ability to take any kind of waste next door or something like that to back to his house. So and if you look at the, the aerial pictures from the, from the, from the, uh, website, the last couple of years, there was, it was all grown up and, 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 and overgrowth, and I don't see, uh, as far as the, the overhead doors and the trucking docks and all that, but Mr. Garrett did or did not use them. There was not eight trucks a day going in and out of there. You know, I mean, the truck came in, it was rarely, if, if at all. So I, I don't, I see this as an expansion of a use, not a continuing nation of, of a non-conforming use. And that I, I, I can't see how that could be a.
Jim.
Yeah, uh, Jim Steel Smith, uh, following along with what Keith said and also, uh, what Steve said, um, I went through and looked at, uh, you know, the powers of our board and the magnitude of what they're asking. And this, in my opinion, is definitely a zoning issue at this point that we're not empowered, they may argue that, but I don't feel this board is empowered to make the kind of decisions you just talked about and you talked about. Whereas the zoning board handles this type of stuff all the time. You know, they talk about ingress, egress, they can handle, um, you know, making sure they're EPA compliant, fire department compliant, we haven't even brought in the fire department yet. Um, that type of thing, the zoning board is better able to handle this. We're not, that's not in our powers. I don't see it. And my opinion is that this needs to go to zoning.
This is Corey again. I'm going to just speak up. I, I want to highlight to the board twenty-four point oh three, which is the enlargement section. I believe that's what this application is being intended to use, says enlargement, but it also mentions substitution. So I understand that the board may have concerns, but I mean, I, I think the argument's going to be made that the zoning resolution gives the power and the authority to the BZA, not the B Z C. So I, I understand frustration maybe in the, the confusion on the matter, but twenty-four point oh three enlargement talks about non-conforming building or use may be completed, extended or substituted, except upon the review and approval, and if necessary, a variance permit issued by the Board of Zoning Appeals. And that's in the zoning resolution, so. Um, I know everyone's talking about this, and I don't want everyone to get a little bit derailed here, because I think the zoning resolution outlines that it's a BZA decision, not a B Z C decision.
Would, uh, again, sorry, uh, would we, um, be totally out of line then, is what you're saying? We're not prepared, we're not able to handle this because of the nuances that go with it. And we've looked into this before. Um, there again, you're talking about traffic, locations, all kinds of, um, safety, you know, that type of thing.
Being, I guess my point would be, not to argue on behalf of the, uh, appellant, uh, or the applicant, I should say, but, uh, that may be the case, but the applicant in this case is just following what the zoning resolution says, which means it's the authority of the.
But do we have the authority to ask the, the zoning to do it?
Where does it say that in?
I don't know. I don't, outside of what you just said, the things that we're um, concerned about, concerned about and empowered to do. One little paragraph doesn't really give us direction on how to do it.
Well, there's no other, there's no other paragraph controlling on the situation, so it may be one little paragraph, but it's the one paragraph that says it's the BZA's purview to make this.
But I don't see in the BZA powers where we have direction on how to do it, whereas the zoning board has directions.
Well, I'm just reiterating what's in Harlem Township zoning resolution.
But, but, but we're asking you as an attorney, as our attorney.
And what I'm saying is your attorney, is that the zoning resolution, which is what is in play in this case, which gives the applicant the ability to make a motion to file an occasion, says it goes to the BZA, and that's why they did so, and that's why I'm here.
Well, actually.
Come, it can come to the, it has come to the BZA.
Yeah, it has.
It has.
And I was trying to actually, by trying to refer it to the zoning board.
We were trying to give them an alternate path.
An alternate path that would encompass what they're looking for. But whereas we have to go through item by item and things that we're not used to doing and research it and do it. I mean, it can be done, but they already have a path to do that.
We have to take into account, you know, whether it's a substitution or an expansion, the nature of the variance and its impact on the surrounding neighbors.
Right.
Right? And I think we've already, uh, heard from, uh, on that point.
Okay.
Uh, and if, if we're empowered to act on the best, in the best interest of the residents of Harlem Township.
Right.
Right? Not to create a nuisance in their backyard, then, uh, we can decide here tonight.
Okay.
Not to, uh, to approve this request.
Okay.
And then I guess if, and if that happens.
Well, let's just take, let's just go to the resolution and take it line by line and.
Yeah, go ahead.
Come on each one of them, says, you know, in, in enlargement or whatever, non-conforming building or may use be completed or extended or substituted upon review and approval with the various necessary, but the BZA. And it gives us some three guidelines here, non-conforming use of less objectionable nature may be substituted from existing non-conforming use. We all, we have decided, or, or, I have decided, and the rest of the board members have decided, I think it's more objectionable than what's there, uh, content right now. So that is A would, would fail. These as existing legal non-conforming use, which occupies any portion of the existing structure premises may be ex- extended to additional portions of such structural premises. I don't think that applies, they're not explaining the use of the structure.
See, I'm sorry, can I make a suggestion? I, I think the applicant wishes to present their case. I think before decisions and conversations should be made about a determination in this matter.
Okay.
I, I think the applicant would like the opportunity to present the facts and circumstances as to why they're making this request.
They, they wish to speak less, let's let them go.
Yep. Yeah, pl- please.
Make your, state your name, address in your presentation.
Joe Place, uh, one South Harrison Street, Ashley. Um, I, uh, with Plan for Land, um, got a few things I want to enter into the record if you could. Um, first is an affidavit of facts from the seller of the property.
Yep.
Others, uh, you referenced, uh, real put of retarder, we had like the inner one, uh, copy just for the record as well. I understand you said you've already decided the, the application, um, but I would like to present some facts, uh, that were not a part of the appeal. Um, but, uh, yeah, I think as we stated at the appeal, we're looking for an fair and unbiased hearing, um, that I, we hear a lot of bias in, in what was stated already, so.
I think it's fact, not bias.
So we did not have public, uh, comment, uh, from adjoining neighbors, uh, at the last meeting. Uh, I understand that the township had submitted some comments, uh, including some testimony from a neighbor. Uh, but we would like to present, uh, some, some facts about the application. The, uh, the affidavit addresses the nature of the three businesses that were on the list that the township maintains. Uh, a clear coat corporation, uh, quality cash and carry and CRW service that occupied this property prior to, uh, Mr. Neff purchasing it. Uh, the CRW is the one that continued until the date of purchase. And as you can see on the aerial photograph, uh, the activities at the rear of the site were dumping of goods that were, were resold. Uh, they were accessed from the neighboring property. Um, but there's a substantial amount of stuff that, uh, we had testified, including firewood and, uh, other industrial materials that were stored at the back of the property that were accessed from the adj- adjoining residential home. Uh, when this property, uh, was sold, uh, access to the, uh, the building that was sold, uh, the industrial building, uh, was taken directly off the road. And again, we would have taken a different path. I, I have to, I, I, I understand you, you've already decided it, but the idea is we had to take a different path here because the applicant was not aware of his opportunity to submit for this, uh, substitution of a non-conforming use, which is fully granted in your code. Uh, it allows for up to twenty-five percent expansion of the prior activities that were housed on site. And I think a lot of the activities that occurred at the rear of the site would not have occurred, uh, previous to, uh, them submitting. So what we've submitted, I felt was a substantial, uh, he, he's giving up a lot of what he, he was using, uh, to date, uh, to try to make a commitment that would be a win-win scenario for the township, the neighbors and, uh, the community. So uh, those commitments that are made in the application that are not on the property today as a non-conforming use would be limiting all industrial activity internal to the sixty-two hundred square foot building. Uh, he's looking to run it, his, uh, trucking company, um, but any activity on the trucks would occur inside of, uh, the facility. External would only be for overnight storage of up to eight trucks. On the testimony that was presented by Alan Garrett Bryant, uh, at the last meeting, as well as what was presented to you as an affidavit of fact, indicated ownership of two dump trucks, three box trucks, and a number of other work vehicles. As you can see on the aerial photograph, some of these still exist there on site, uh, on the neighboring property. Uh, those have been retired and he's getting rid of those, but those continue to operate and move material on the back of the property up to the date it was sold, according to his, uh, his statement. Uh, the, uh, hours of operation that we're presenting are to further uh, restrict the use, uh, from what's been, uh, stated there now. Uh, the activities before were, uh, were unstated, so, um, there's no hours that were in the current, uh, current restrictions on this property. Uh, dumpster service, uh, I think all of that was pretty much outside storage across the property. Uh, Derek's done considerable work in trying to clean the property up. Uh, he's indicated that anything that's, uh, generated as waste from the building would be put into that dumpster. Uh, additionally, all vegetation that remains on the property, and we tried to highlight, would be maintained and, and a lot of that has grown up over the years. Well, since, uh, the nineteen sixties, when the business activity started on the site, we realized the importance of that screening, the proposed use. Uh, additionally, the gravel lot would not contain any business activity with the proposed application you have in front of you. Um, we're not proposing removing it because of the cost and the, uh, noise that would be generated from that just doesn't seem right. Um, that area was previously a storage yard where the dump trucks would, uh, load and there were, there were perimeter paths you can see on the aerial photograph. Uh, those perimeter paths, uh, he's essentially just tried to solidify the area, so he's brought stone in to, to try to solidify it. Um, we've discussed that the highest and best use in that area would probably be a single family home, and that would allow for eventually conversion of this property to a single family use, uh, from the, uh, non-conforming use. Uh, so the use of this building, while sixty-two hundred square foot's pretty substantial, uh, the thought would be that if he can get use of it as a business, eventually they could build a home behind it. It could be converted to more of a home occupation, which would be in keeping with the Harlem Township zoning resolution. Uh, so in the discussions that we'd had leading up to the, the submittal, uh, we were, uh, discussing, uh, that, that potential that we try to get in conformance with the Harlem Township zoning resolution. Um, additionally, uh, I know you mentioned, uh, septic, uh, the, there were employees and partners on this property, uh, previous. Uh, there's Porta John facility that's still been maintained, it's out of sight, uh, in the cove, uh, outside on the property, uh, next to the, uh, three overhead doors, uh, that used to be a loading dock or loading docks, um, but that, that, uh, Porta John facility would be maintained. This is not for, uh, eight hour shifts of working on site. Uh, what he's looking to do is be able to work on a truck occasionally inside of the shop, uh, store a vehicle inside of, a couple of vehicles inside of the shop for maintenance purposes. Uh, but ultimately, it's, it's, uh, overnight parking for, uh, dump trucks. Uh, his thought was this, and, and I agree, this is less intense and, and numerous reasons. Uh, mainly because it's not the activity that you've seen happen on the property or the complaints that had been generated in the past. And I would like to enter any, uh, testimony that you have from neighbors about activities that have occurred on this property. Um, but if there's safeguards that can be put in place, I feel like the best win-win for the application would be to, uh, to put together a substitution of a non-conforming use to further limit the use and define the characteristics of what's being proposed. So uh, I try to work with Derek to narrow down and, and scope down the use, uh, to limit, uh, potential for complaints, get everything out of sight and out of mind from, uh, from neighbors. Uh, we identified some new parkings, spaces that are up closer to the building, primarily to get them to where they're not at the rear of the property, uh, such as where, um, Alan had stored them, uh, on his neighboring property there next door. Um, so, uh, the aerial photograph includes both properties for that reason. Uh, they were used in tandem, uh, the business activity when he sold the property already limited the use because he's taking it from eight acres and taking it down to five acres. And then he's taken that five acres and he's only using a portion of that property for industrial use versus the open storage that was previously done on the back of the lot. And, uh, the testimony I heard from Alan at the last meeting, as well as the affidavit that we presented, is that he was selling firewood and other, uh, discarded materials from his woodworking business and his repair business. Uh, those materials were getting, uh, truck dumped and then reloaded and sold, uh, from the rear of the property. So we went through the standards of twenty-four oh three and relationship to the application as we're trying to present it to you. Um, the, uh, overall broad range of the three businesses that occupied this property and the characteristics of what was allowed under the, uh, the repair and woodworking business. Uh, there were multiple pieces of equipment operating inside of this building that generated noise. Uh, there was traffic generated as a result of this activity. Uh, we feel like this is a, a much narrow scope or range of activity. It's a, this. It's, uh, the storage of vehicles for, uh, for a trucking business, uh, in assigned spots and only in overnight hours. Um, the idea would be, uh, business hours would be, um, when trucks may come and go. Uh, but they leave in the morning and they come back in the evening and unless they are in need of a repair, um, that's the only reason that they're coming back throughout the day. Um, the expansion of the use, uh, as far as what's there, um, there is, there are allowances in the Harlem Township code that allow for expansion of a nonconforming use. Um, we're arguing that the substitution is less intense. Uh, in any expansion on site is only in, uh, the, uh, front area where it was previously not used, but there's substantial areas of the property in the rear that are no longer going to be used as a part of this application. Uh, alteration, uh, there's no further alterations of the property other than assigning these spots for trucks to park and get them further away from the neighbors that might have concern. Closer to the building where, uh, they can be, uh, maintained, security, housing, uh, anything like that around the the actual structure. Um, the photo on the cover of our application highlights the nature of the view between the road. That would remain unchanged with the exception of uh, some proposed landscaping, uh, just further screening the building from view from the road. Uh, this is from a standstill at the front of the road. If you if you drove in by, uh, you have to slow down or stop there to really get a view of this property uh, through the, uh, through the existing vegetation. Uh, as far as the, uh, the nature of it, we're proposing less than ten percent of the site to be used for parking and driveway. Uh, which we feel is within the character of the twenty-five percent or greater, uh, area that was, uh, proposed uh, for a potential expansion of a nonconforming use. Um, I tried to go through the characteristics of what would be potential safeguards and offer, uh, as many as we can. And, uh, we're, we're here to discuss those. That's what we were looking for in the meeting. Um, if if you have already decided, I just asked that we have an opportunity to talk about that. Um, but, um, maybe after we've heard some public comment and, uh, can understand what the concerns, other concerns might be.
Yeah, we haven't voted. We haven't decided yet. We have some opinions we've heard.
Yeah, it was stated that you had decided. Thank you.
The board hasn't decided.
Let's hear from this.
Yeah, well, um, do we have any property owners that would like to to to, uh, give some testimony tonight? Speak tonight?
I will.
Yep, um.
I'm Chris Nance. I've lived at fifty-eight-six Harlem Road for forty-two years. My head looks like. At the end of our, we have two driveways, one on Harlem, one in Center Village. Our father and I bought the property for us. We have a guy that runs a gun clinic. Six in the morning. You know what? So be it. We get, I mean, nine o'clock at night, he's shooting ARs. He teaches people. You know, you gotta pick, these guys are young, trying to make some money. They're not on welfare. They're not have a cardboard sign. Um, I'm just saying we need to look at all aspects. And we drove back the to the property. And we found nothing. It was cleaned up. I mean, granted, the the mound had grass and everything on it, but that's, we're here for them because you know what? They put a bunch of gra- and it's not because of that, but they put a bunch of gravel in our driveway. They they were tearing up something else. They never charged us a dime and we have a half a mile driveway. We give them fuel money, but I'm just saying, there's lots of noises and you know, we, it's a country. We, when our, we had kids, we had mud cross. You know what I mean? So you got trouble for that. You tell me shut up. Anyway, I just, I mean, sometimes we have to weigh our measures. I mean, he's worked for ODOT for over twenty years. He's a project manager. So when we went to that lot, it's like, what are they talking about? This is, this is good. I mean, structurally, he had not a bunch of, you know, crap around there. So, and there was a porta potty, I will say that.
Thank you.
I also, Harold Nance, on the, uh, fifty-eight-six Harlem Road, been here since eighty-six. Nineteen eighty-six and, uh, yeah. We had our truck back in the day. We had, um, we parked it at the end of our.
You're good on our driveway. We have a.
And you know, nobody said anything about our semi-truck being parked there, but our neighbor did. I don't know if you guys probably remember this back in hmm, early two thousands where John, the, uh, the machine gun.
On Metcalf.
And everybody wanted to make a noise ordinance because he was shooting fifty cows. And they they were reporting him from, uh, the golf course over here. They were calling in saying, hey, someone's making noise. What's going on? Anyway, this was in our backyard and we came down and this place was full. And no one wanted to hear all the motor, all the motorbike riders and kids with motocross tracks. And we had motocross tracks too. They didn't want no, no noise. And they said, he can do what he wants all day long.
And he shot off grenades.
And yeah, they they had the cannons and everything. And anyway, so I've been through this and what they've done and if the, uh, the average Harley Davidson has a ninety-five, eighty-five to ninety decibel noise when it started up. Okay, and you can just idle it around at fifty feet. Now, we could have a bike club out here at this property. That was okay. I think it was said, anything but a dump truck operation. But anyway, and a five-five-six, which my neighbor shoots regularly, is hundred and sixty-five decibels up to at fifty feet. Now, an average sterling dump truck, they are limited to seventy decibels for their factory production. And I, and I've driven dump trucks and I, and anyway, the dump trucks are not allowed that you think. And the way I see it, there's three people that complained about someone when they were dumping their beds over here, building this parking lot for their storage of these trucks that would be used twice a day. And I I think it it seems, I hate to use railroad, but these guys are getting railroaded, in my opinion.
Thank you. Um, is there anybody else who would like to speak? If if you could, uh, if you're able, uh, please come to the podium and.
Oh, you're making fun of my walker, right?
I didn't want to make you walk up.
Yeah, my name's Bob Hill and I own the property right at the end of the driveway, one-two-one-two-one, uh, Center Village. And all I can say is the property's in better shape than it was when when they came. I mean, that was a fiasco over there. There's a lot of crap laying everywhere. Uh, you know, they have a nice pave, I'll call it paved areas gravel, but it's nice white gravel. It's flat. It's taken, the the parking lot is taken care of or the area is taken care of. They've made attempts to squelch, um, some of the sound that goes on back there. Uh, which I don't hear it, but obviously somebody's complaining about it, so there must be something, but they they only leave in the morning, come back in in the early evening. It isn't like they're running all night long or all day long in and out. I I think it's done nothing but enhancing neighborhood. You drive by, you see nothing but cleanliness. And that wasn't the case before they took over the property.
Thank you.
I'm Roger Barris, one-two-two-zero-one Center Village. I live right across the street. Lived there for thirty-seven years. When Garrett Brandt was there, the weeds was at high, all the way around the place. Now it's down clean. I've never heard the noise. I mean, I live right across the street from it. I don't hear it. I hear more from the soccer field. I do from there. I don't see a thing wrong with what they're doing.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you. Anyone else?
So, uh, I I appreciate the fact this has had a long history. I I continue to ask you guys, fair and unbiased. Is there a way we can move forward with the idea that we're trying to find a mediated solution that addresses any of the issues that you'd heard before? Um, I realize the nature of approving a nonconforming use might sound intimidating, but the, uh, approving a commercial or industrial use would be much more intimidating. Uh, there's a number of nonconforming cases up and down this road, down into Genoa Township and east into Licking County. This used to be a commu- uh, commercial corridor. There's a major route, uh, had a lot of businesses in the sixties. Uh, a lot of those businesses have dwindled, but a lot of them haven't. And if you go further west and you see top surface out on Red Bank Road, uh, you see the, um, Hills, uh, manufacturing there on, uh, Center Village in Genoa Township. Uh, those uses were approved as nonconforming uses. They're not industrially zoned. Uh, that's the same thing that we're asking for here. It's a recognition. There was a previous industrial use on this property. While the aerial might not tell the whole story, uh, it never does. Uh, I will say it's great as a resource to see the impacts. But if somebody's trying to stay out of, out of sight, out of mind, you're not going to see that on aerial photograph. What you see is the difference on this aerial photograph is a substantial cleanup that he did on the property. Uh, the investment he made in putting in the back gravel lot was i- in his mind at the time, uh, trying to, uh, get vehicles out of sight, out of mind. It was if we can put them back there, they're not going to be visible from the road and therefore that's going to be better for everybody. I realize that that raised a lot of alarms. He raises, realizes that raised a lot of alarms. Uh, the idea was, uh, not to, uh, uh, expand a, a nonconforming use without permission from the township. He thought that's what he was being asked to do. Um, what we're saying is, uh, we're okay with, uh, not using that area and, uh, you know, I Derek and I've had our own discussions back and forth and I I've already dwindled him down to what I can get him to as far as a nonconforming use would go. Um, I do think there's opportunity to discuss the amount of parking spots, the location of those parking spots, the relationship to all that. Um, what we're really trying to say is how can the property be used, uh, in an appropriate way? I think there's some legal opportunity or there's some legal obligations to continue nonconforming uses. But I do understand the township's desire to try to dwindle those down to conforming uses. We're saying that the best opportunity here is use this, uh, this six thousand square foot building. Get it to the ability that it could be a home occupation in the future. He doesn't want to live there. He's not, he's not desiring to build a house today. But that doesn't mean that as he, uh, he decides to move on or if somebody buys his business, that they wouldn't decide to build a house at the back of the property. So what we're asking for is the ability to convert this property in the future for a conforming AR one district, uh, use, which would be single family use with a home-based business. Um, he's just not in a position where he can do that right now. It was a home-based business when it was eight acres. Um, the, how the cards fell, it sold, uh, it sold for industrial use, um, separate from the house that was there. Um, he's treating it as though it's a home-based business with the idea that he's trying to maintain the appearance off the street the same as it was there before. Uh, the only difference being that there's a drive access to this property now that isn't there, wasn't there before. Commercial industrial traffic all went in and out of the single family drive that's to the, uh, west. Um, a little bit of familiarity with both the properties to the west. Um, I I think the township would desire both those to get cleaned up as well in the future. Um, he's, it's not it within his control, um, but he did take an eight acre property and took five acres of it that he's trying to clean up. And, uh, that's what he's here asking for, some ability to continue to use that, uh, substantial infrastructure that's already invested on this property. Had overhead loading doors on the back of this thing. Um, they were, they were in use. He put them in for a reason. Uh, the, the two doors that are a pass-through, uh, would no longer be a pass-through because on the other side of the building, the drive's been removed as the, as evidenced by the aerial, um, there's a small parking area there. Um, but they'll no longer be driving vehicles through the building in a, in a consistent manner. It's really a one bay of maintenance and a couple of inside spots that they can use. So on the, on the drawings that we presented, existing conditions, uh, is really just existing aerial photograph. Um, but I tried to limit and show you the view, uh, from the road. And again, that's evidenced by the front photograph. Um, if you look at sheet two, uh, the main reason I'm showing that is to show two, two areas. Uh, the dark green on that, uh, is the, uh, area that's, uh, being preserved in in wooded nature. Uh, he's not taking down a single tree in those areas. Uh, we are reserving an undisturbed area at the back of the property that would be a poti- potential for a septic system. I had reservations on whether or not that would fit in there originally, but it does fit in there pretty nice, uh, in front of the gravel lot. And then that gravel lot would not be used for part of the nonconforming business, would essentially, uh, revert itself today. Um, but the idea would be that eventually you could build a home back there and a good chunk of that driveway and the infrastructure that was put in could be used for a single family, uh, house with attached garage, detached garage, uh, whatever would be fitting with the Harlem Township zoning resolution in the future. So the area that's in white and the red building are the two areas that were primarily proposing use. Um, the outlined red building, I I showed three parking spaces inside of the building that are between the two overhead doors. Uh, there's three overhead, uh, loading docks that were filled in. Uh, it's now at-grade, uh, overhead doors. And that's where the three spaces are shown. Uh, so he's asking for the ability to park a, uh, a single vehicle outside of each of those. Um, he does not have all these vehicles on site today. That's not the, the nature of. What I'm trying to ask for is what limitation would we have on this property in his business? Um, so what's being proposed here in those five parking spaces? Uh, the reason why they're there is because we're, we're trying to designate parking spaces for vehicles. If you'd rather see those, um, be stacked in the existing gravel area, um, that's something that, you know, we could talk about. I propose them separate because if a vehicle was sitting there, uh, I would think the fire department would want it separated a little bit from the main drive aisle and not to cluster everything up on the building. Um, the other nice thing is it puts it out of the line of sight from the road and from neighboring properties where they're at. Uh, there's a pond, um, you can see on the aerial that's located just south of that. Um, that pond is really the only opening on the property. Everything else is wooded, so, uh, it would provide some opportunity for that to remain. Um, so that's sheet two, uh, sheet three, these are all commitments. Again, everything we're trying to submit to you are commitments that he's going to maintain. Uh, sheet three actually shows the, uh, uh, land, the, uh, drainage force as it crosses through the property. Um, there was a culvert that was installed to get across. Um, he wasn't able to access the back of the property that he purchased. So he put that culvert in to access it. He's still going to use that for, uh, domestic use on the property, but no business activity. Um, so again, it's infrastructure that was installed and it could be used for a single family home down the road, so we're not proposing that to be removed. Uh, but we are not proposing that to be a part of the business, uh, activity that would be housed on site. And, uh, I will say you you have, uh, aerial photo photograph for enforcement, so, um, he not to say he'd ever be dishonest, but what he's proposing to you is trying to cluster and and be a good neighbor to those that complained, which were primarily to the south of this property. And I do think that the majority of the noise and complaints that you guys heard that we didn't hear tonight were, were when they were expanding this lot in the back and cleaning the property up. Um, it was not business activity. It was construction activity on the site. And, um, while that, they might have heard additional noise in the future. Um, we're with the mitigated proposal and what's being proposed here, those complaints should not come in because we're moving the business activity back to the business building at the front of the property. So I'm here to answer any questions you have. Um, spent a considerable amount of hours on this, trying to find a good solution for the township and for my client and for the neighbors. Um, I do respect the comments that we heard tonight and I respect the comments we heard at the last meeting as well. Um, I, I think you, uh, if if you have a preconceived notion coming in that he's running a substantial trucking business, a lot of that noise was the construction that was on site. And, um, I, it was banging tailgates is what we heard. He, he's not dumping or unloading stuff on site for his business. What was dumped and loaded on site was to expand the business. And that's not going to continue with the exception of those three spots or four spots that we've, we've shown there on the south side of the building. So um, I'm a little troubled again. That's why I, a little taken aback by the comments of it was, you know, it, we have problems approving this. I don't want to send it to the zoning commission. I've told him time and time again. A comprehensive plan recommends this to be a residential neighborhood in the future. I think this helps you get closer to that residential in the future while still preserving his property rights for what he purchased and what he's, he's intended to operate this property. Um, I do feel like there's a number of other nonconforming uses up and down Center Village Road that continue to operate.
That's irrelevant.
The apartments.
That's just irrelevant.
There was apartments across the road. Um, you heard some comments from them. Um, there's, uh, yeah, okay.
Okay, well, but that's not what we're here to talk about.
Right.
I can point to them all over the place, Joe.
Yeah, we're, we're here to talk about land use. What I'm saying is that, um, this is in my mind, a situation that already exists. It's not something that we're creating.
Maybe. Okay. Have we heard from everybody? Like to speak tonight?
I have one question. Um, next to their property is a complete dump. And it's Mr. Graves. Um, and I love him. I mean, he's a veteran to the area and everything, but there's trailers and everything. And here we're going to pick on these guys when we need to get all that hold out of there. There could be all kinds of rodents in there. Have you even gone back over to their property too?
No, yeah.
It's irrelevant.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, you should drive by. You can hardly see the trail. There's campers that are. I'm just saying, you should drive by. You can hardly see the trail. There's campers that are sixty years old. More than once, and they're hidden by the trees or the weeds, sorry. So I'm just trying to figure out what the heck's on as far as keeping our community, keeping our community at the utmost pleasant place to be. I had to ask.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from board members?
I'd like to continue where I started.
Continue his.
So looking at twenty four oh three enlargement and going through the different sections, it says, a nonconforming use of left's objectable nature may be substitute for existing nonconforming use. That's an objective opinion there that what is objectable, what is not objectable. I don't know the answer to that. But we need to make sure we're not putting something there that is, you know, more objectionable than what was there previously. My second part of that is what was the use prior and did it cease? That it had ceased for two years. I, I mean, Mr. Garrett Grant may have testified, whatever, but I have driving by there for years and not seen any activity going on that looked like any kind of business was operating. So I don't know if it did cease for two years or not. I have no proof of that, but I have a big question about that. An existing legal nonconforming use which occupies any portion of the existing structure or premises may be extended to additional portions of structures or premises. I don't see that relevant in this case. I mean, he's using the same structure. It's not expanding the structure. Or you don't go into any different portion of the structure, so that I don't think is relevant. See the alteration, relocation, reconstruction of a nonconforming use structure, sign or building, providing that such will make it nonconforming use substantially more in character with the surroundings and shall meet all setback requirements of said district. Let's see, alteration, relocation and reconstruction of a nonconforming use or structure. I don't think the location or the structure has been changed, so I don't see that applies too much to this. Part of it either. Number D is extension of a nonconforming use when such extension will substantially make the nonconforming use more in character with the surroundings. I don't. I don't. Again, this doesn't seem to make anything more more conforming to the character of surroundings, but its surroundings weren't very good to start with. The expansion shall not be more than twenty five percent greater in size than the nonconforming use that existed at the time of the passage of this zoning resolution. Again, that twenty five percent as said, I remember Mr. Schmidt, the zoning inspector citing Mr. Garrett Brand several times for trash, for vehicles and stuff, and they had a continuous fight there for years. Mr. Schmidt has passed on. I think that I think they gave up trying to get it cleaned up. It has been an eyesore problem for years and years and years, and it's continued to be that, so. It is. It's just, is it this less objectable nature is the biggest question, and that's, I don't have that answer made up my mind yet. I still had concerns about things like this sanitation and that the health department should have some kind of saying what's going on. The fire department should have some saying what's going on to make sure they all conform with those kind of codes too. I think that's the biggest thing that I would be concerned about is the safety of the occupants of that building, the safety of the neighbors and stuff like that. So that's where I stand. I still have no answer yet. That's what the resolution says.
Well, that list that you had, I have three that I highlighted there. One was more in character with the surroundings. We may have heard testimony tonight that it probably is in character or an improvement on some of the surroundings. I would, from what we heard from some of the neighbors there. As it was a business, the prior business continuing for two years before the sale. On the Saturday of the fax we presented the day, item three says CRW Services, a custom remodeling and woodworking service, and operated on the aforementioned plus or minus five point one three acres of property until the day it was sold to Derek and Lorena in that. So that's from the prior owner on his affidavit. CRW Services was the woodworking service, I believe.
Just to clarify, it is still in business. It's just no longer operating on this property.
So is there evident? Can I ask a question to that point? I mean, the affidavit is an affidavit, but I would want to see proof of tax filings that there was an active commercial business operating in that building during that period of time. So if he filed a Schedule C with the IRS that he had income and sales and expenses.
We didn't include the business registration, which includes the businesses that are paying for taxes are included in Exhibit G in the application.
Yeah, but you have not provided any proof of taxes being paid.
I mean, people can't get the president's taxes.
It would not be that difficult if he has been filing Schedule Cs as a single proprietor.
Do you subpoena those or how do you get those from them?
I can't get them, but if you want to see this thing move forward, I think we need hard proof.
So again, we.
That this business was a commercially viable business for those two years.
It's still a registered business.
That doesn't mean it was doing transacting business. From what Mr. Garrett Brand said, it sounded like it was a woodworking hobby shop the last couple of years. I mean, when he was here testifying, Joe, so I've seen no evidence that there was a commercial operation operating out of that that location with the aforementioned costs, sales, income, salaries of a business. That's the definition of a business.
We testified to the partners, including Mr. Schmidt, that had done business on this property in the past, people that have worked there. Those individuals.
That's in the last two years, evidence of the last two years.
So what we've included is the woodworking business that continues to operate. It's custom remodeling and woodworking services. And again, in Exhibit G, we've included business records, including the contact, the summary of business activity, what's going there. The idea it's in good standing with the state. It posts a hundred and thirty four thousand dollars in annual revenue included there. I've not pulled his tax.
Did it operate when it? All I'm saying is when it operated out of this location where there are tax filings.
There's evidence of that in here. It, this is.
I don't think there is evidence in there. You have evidence of a business, a licensed business.
It posts, it says a hundred and thirty four thousand, three hundred and seventy eight thousand dollars in revenue. Had a single employee. This is current. This is.
But not at this address.
It's posted at his business address next door, but the business continues to operate. This is just how the business operates today. And again, that's from a filing. I can't tell you what year, but that's a recent year. It's current. That's posted online. There's only certain things you can access and we try to provide you what.
So when I looked at those, there's not a date, you know, of an active. Oh, okay.
There are dates. I tried to include the Secretary State's Registry. It indicates the effective dates when they were effective, and it states active under the registration for entity RN six one one five seven, which is his current business that's in operation. And again, this business owns a owns eight trucks that are located on the adjoining property he's currently in the process of getting rid of. His interest is to dissolve that business eventually. That's why he sold this five acres. But the business is still active. And it's continued to be active even after the sale of the property. He just no longer uses this five acres as a part of his business activity. And again, there's photographs inside the application that show the nature of some of this equipment still Allen's, right? Some of the equipment still Allen's that's inside the building. We did try to post those just so you can get a nature of what was going on inside of the activity as well. He's done a substantial amount to clean it up. If I had met him before he cleaned it up, I would have loved to grab photographs. If I had the ability to pull tax records from somebody, I would definitely do that. I did extensive research trying to find everything that we can find that could be available to us. And I do believe Mr. Garrett Brand that he's still in operation today. He is a one man shop today, and that's with those five acres. But this five acres has dumping yards at the rear of the property that were that were active. There were trees that were being farmed off the back of the property for woodworking activities. Yeah, anyhow, I could go on and on. I don't want to sound like I'm rambling, but the idea is we've tried to do as much extensive research to bring to you the evidence that we have. I feel like the neighbor's testimony on top of that, that they understand Mr. Garrett Brand was operating there beforehand. It just, there is a new driveway. I will admit that. And if there's something we can do to make that driveway look less intimidating to the neighborhood, we'd love to do that. I do think that that driveway is well kept. And I think if you went via at the average speed on that road, you wouldn't even know it's there. I think the board has the exception to that, and definitely the zoning inspector has the exception to that, in that they have the history of knowing it's there. I didn't know it was there before I met Derek, and I believe most residents probably will. It'll be out of sight, out of mind in the future. We're happy to address anything we can with the application itself. I don't think it's approve it or not approve it. I think there's some use to this property that we need to, that we can consider and try to legislate. And he's willing to bind himself to a nonconform, a substitution of a nonconforming use in the hours of operation and the things that would be posted with that. We just presented to you the request and asking you for discussion on it. But if there's a concern about the two years, we'd be happy to further address that. I don't want to belabor this for neighbor's sake and for his sake. He's got a business to operate. So whatever we can get you in a timely manner, we will get you in a timely manner. But I cannot bring tax records for Mr. Garrett Brand. I've asked him numerous times. Can you give me any type of financials for the property? And what I found online, he was surprised was available online. I think he just doesn't want his business to be known. He likes Derek. He wants to help him, but he doesn't want the township, assuming that he's got a continued operation and being in violation next door. That's not his goal. So we're in a tough spot and we're trying to provide you as much as we can. But in relation to that, all I can tell you is that we're trying to restrict this use so that you don't get further complaints. And you can say you did your job as a port of zoning appeals and that you dwindled and you made a less intense use than what was there before by the junkyard and the operation that existed before.
Thank you.
To Steve's point about the business and being run, you gave us the historic listing of the separate, the Ohio Secretary of Business's registered Garrett brand. And they've all been canceled effective twenty fifteen.
Yeah, he downsided except for the custom remodeling and woodworking services. That's the business that he continued to operate. He is retiring. I mean, you heard him testify to that. He is retiring, but he wanted to sell this building for business use before he retired. And that's the nature of why we're in front of you. He had a business activity here and we're trying to realize some return on the business investment that he had had. These other businesses, I would call Mr. Garrett Brand a serial entrepreneur. I don't know the nature or the financial nature of a lot of these businesses, but I've heard stories. And all I can say is.
I don't think we're not disputing that.
So what I'm trying to say is that the business activity, the CRW Services is really the activity that continued on the site up to the sale of the property, and it still continues today. The other businesses on here, I did not research them because he had admitted he was downscaling his operations in preparation of retirement. But he did not stop using this building for business activities. And that's why we're here asking. I think the code anticipates that. And again, I think there were a lot more than eight employees, and the eight employees we're talking about are come and go employees that will park here in the morning and come back in the evening. And yeah, I think there's a lot more that happened on this property in the past and a lot more that the neighborhood probably knew about at the time, but yeah, it's not something that we have photographs or any evidence to present tonight. Really focused on just saying CRW is downsized. There's a substantial amount of equipment that was removed offsite. What he's bringing in and a potential for eight, it's, we're talking about maybe six dump trucks that would be in service and a couple that would be in repair. So that's the nature of what's in the application that you have in front of you.
So on the prayer here, we heard from some of the neighbors with some concerns about noise. And you've alluded to that being construction related noise. Are you guys aware of any other noise complaints from the neighbors that were construction related?
No, we did a public records request of the township's complaints. And what I understood was there were complaints that came in. Some photographs were taken of truck activity. There's nothing that we're aware of outside of that. The discussion was, I lost my train. So the tailgate and the banging that you were hearing about, that was all construction activity. He had brought some materials in to do fill and clean up the rear of the property. They excavated and took out a lot of the decaying wood, the chemicals, the other things that were stored on the back of this property. Some of these other businesses included extensive chemicals as evidenced in the application too. We have the testimony that Alan had given us. Anyhow, we're trying to clean those up, but the complaints and what was there are residents that are over four hundred feet south of this property. There's an open field. And I think what they heard and they saw were trucks dumping at the rear of the site when they were doing work. I think some of that work continued as he got materials, not knowing that it was generating concerns for the neighbors. And he wants to obviously make sure that that doesn't come back.
So with that in mind, I think you've proposed those five parking spaces that aren't currently constructed that may bring that same kind of complaint.
Yeah, so I propose those because I thought when you're talking about fire department's concerns, that we probably want to come up with something that's an end all be all. This is where you park trucks. If you would rather them be parked in this gravel area. I think he didn't ask me to propose additional parking there, but if there's a need to park those trucks in that area, we can do it. I think the cleanest operation would be to put in five spaces, and that's probably going to take one or two days at most. It's not something, yeah, it's not something that would take weeks of fill and cleanup activity like he had done before. So you're talking a day or two of construction and realizing if we want to be limited on the hours of construction and stuff like that, I'm sure you'd be open to that. It's not to generate noise complaints. It's simply to just try to get everybody out of sight, out of mind, make the issue go away from a day to day complaint. We want Mr. Cannon to have peace in the zoning office, so.
I guess my question is today there's eight trucks. I mean, next year will there be ten trucks?
So you have the ability to limit that. That's what we're coming to you.
Saying, you know, I don't want to see, keep growing, keep growing, keep growing because, you know, I know, hey, business is really great. We can do ten trucks now, you know. That's my big concern too.
There's no limitations on the use today other than it's nonconforming and an expansion of that would have to come to you, but it's a more fuzzy line. We're trying to draw a dark line in the sand. And honestly, that's the nature of the appeal is was just to find out what that line looks like. And we'd like that line to be more defined and clear for everybody's sake so it can go away. So he can operate his business in peace, peace of mind, knowing that any investment that he makes into this building inside is not going to be taken away from him a month or two from now.
At the risk of opening a rat hole. You know, but you guys mentioned the fact that you've thought about building a home on the property. And I guess the connect the dots. It seems like you're saying that, you know, if there was a residence, you know, fully compliant, you know, residents approved with sanitation and all that, then, and if the person living there owned this business, you could consider petition, you know, coming to the BZA for a home occupation variance, right?
Correct.
And but I know that one of the things that's looked at pretty carefully is that that would be a whole new variance.
Be a conditional use.
It'd be a, but it would be a start from scratch, conditional use, home occupation variance.
Correct.
And one of the things that goes hand in hand with that, I know this because I had to go through the process a couple of years ago. I know this because I had to go through the process a couple of years ago for our property. Is that at the time of sale, that variance vaporizes. So that if you build a house there and then got an attendant home occupation variance on that property, and there's a lot that comes with that. Uh, Keith's the expert on this, but you know, the number of people, the hours of operation, the number of trucks coming and going, when we had to fill out all that paperwork. That, okay, so assuming that, met the uh, approval of the BZA, whoever's sitting on it at that time. But then if that, that property was sold, that would be the end of that variance. That variance does not transfer with the sale of property.
I think, I, so I'm not a lawyer, um, but I think you heard otherwise at your last hearing. I understand.
No, no, but this is now a home occup, this is a whole new variance. All the op, other operating variances that you might have had previously. They allowed you to get into operation there as you're requesting.
We're not proposing to build a house, what I was saying.
Yes, you were saying you were.
Yeah, so.
I think I heard him say maybe some.
Well, okay, I'm, I'm just putting that out there so that you understand how the rules of that work.
I disagree with some of your statements, though. I understand how Harlem Township's handled it. That is not standard within the state of Ohio.
That is Harlem Township's rules. So that's a different argument if you want to contest that.
And I, I don't think.
So I just wanted to make sure that there's not a general assumption.
Sure.
That that would easily flow right into a home occupation.
I don't think anybody would propose building a home on this property without coming in front of you guys uh, to ask for a conditional use. Uh, and the limitations on that might be more restricted, what is what I was saying. Uh, if, if you granted a home occupation and uh, the uh, two or three of those uh, vehicles were for owner occupied uh, use. The idea is you're again, trying to dwindle the use down to something that's more compatible with the district. I was simply offering that as a ten year, twenty year, thirty year solution. I'm a land use planner. I try to think about the future. My thought is, how do we get everybody happy down the road? I think reserving the back of this property for development of a home makes a lot of sense. We're not asking for use on the back of the property for that reason. Uh, and I do think the driveway and the improvements that were already done would be suitable for a home, single family home construction there. So all I was saying was uh, end in mind, I, I do think that there's a um, potential that this property could be fully compliant with the Harlem Township zoning resolution without a non-conforming use in the future. Um, we're simply trying to ask for a continuation of the non-conforming use uh, allowance until that occurred. But trying to keep that in mind for the future.
Well, Keith, Keith asked some questions that based on some of the uh, rules we follow here and uh, a couple of those came up. I think I was alluding to them earlier. So some of the questions are, is it more in character with the surroundings? Um, was the business, prior business in operation for, for two years. Uh, we had some questions on some of that documentation. So that's one of the questions. And then um, uh, item A there, I believe was, is it less objectionable than what it was prior? So those are some of the questions I think we're going to have to uh, think about up here. Um, you suggested that you're, you're open to some limitations and some other things on that, on that property and, and some input on parking or some of those other deals. Um,
Yes, he has a business to operate, but I think part of that could be a dialogue. Um, I know uh, we could get him sworn in and he could offer testimony or I could uh, counsel with my client here, but our interest is to come up with a win-win solution. So if there's something you, you could think of that would make this substantially um, as a uh, suitable substitution where it's a less intense use, we'd be happy to have that discussion today. And uh, I would, I would love to have that discussion today. Thank you.
Well, I guess as the board, we need to decide if we'd like to continue with that discussion.
Yeah, I, I might just clarify, um, the, the gravel was to clean the property up. It does look more intense on the aerial photograph, photograph. And I have to admit, that's one of the first things my eyes had drawn to, too. Um, this area had truck traffic on it before. And um, I did, I do want to say that what, what we're trying to say is the area that's highlighted in yellow on the site or the on, in white on the site plan would be the area that would be used for business activities. Um, we're not proposing it at the rear of the site. And uh, we are proposing fully parking to be split up so that it's less intense. Um, not to uh, to create a bigger burden, but um, those parking spots were identified as just areas that we could get out of the way. Um, and I do think uh, we had already talked about having the fire department uh, approve. Once you guys are good, having the fire department approve. So it could be subject to fire department approval of the site plan. Um, the health department's uh, really not involved in onsite septic um, discussion because he's got a portage on. So we can call them and get a letter of that effect. Um, but if he did decide, I, I would not put a restroom in this building because it seems like that's just further validating the industrial commercial use. Um, he's talking about come and go traffic and a portage on works fine. It worked fine for Alan. Uh, when he wasn't able to make it to his house, he had a portage on. So uh, there's no real reason to, to put a restroom on this property that that in my mind would make it more intense, um, because you might have full-time employees at some point, twenty years from now be requested in there. He's not proposing that. So, but, but the nature of why I interrupted, um, the gravel looks intense, but um, the, the idea is he wanted to keep a clean appearance like the neighbors have testified to try to limit the junkyard appeal um, that this property had in the past. And then you need to deliberate. I'll stop talking.
No, no, it's all part of the disc, discussion. It's. So essentially what I'm hearing is that it's from there towards the street. Oh, sorry. So I'll speak louder. Yeah, this is Steve Eisenbrow. And so I'm looking at page two. So we, we know the basis. So what I'm hearing is the proposal. It's kind of from the crease forward. Is where they intend to operate this business. Is that is.
That's correct.
If I got it right.
Yeah, the only reason it extends somewhat back the drive is for a turnaround area. If the fire truck ever did pull in and uh, same thing with the dump truck, they need to back up into one of the bays. It gives them a little area to do that. Just trying to be honest. Yep.
Yeah, but you know, what you're saying is more or less from the crease to the road.
Correct.
Is the operating area.
That's it. I thought you said creek. I uh.
Creek. I'm sorry, not creek. I'm sorry. It's a technical term.
Almost one in the same, but yeah.
Yeah, that's a lot further, right? So was it eight plus two or eight total trucks in your proposal?
It was, it was six plus two.
Six plus two in repair.
Yeah, six, six.
Six operating.
Two for potential repair. Correct. Yeah, I, I've got a few more potential spots shown, but that's just for rotation. So if he was running a truck in and out, um, but it's, it's not, yeah, in.
But that's where the, the basis of the, you know, could, historical concern is, you know, I'm the noise in the activity and uh, um, and seven to seven, you said?
Yes.
You think you can comply with that?
Yes, yes.
I mean, that's, that's.
Yeah, it's a come and go. So the uh, activities they're pulling out at seven, so they might have an employee show up a little bit before that, but the trucks are pulling out. That's, but yes. He's a so try to limit it in to for, out of respect to the neighbors.
So number three, daily access for up to eight employees. Six of whom will be Joe.
I'm, I'm sorry.
That's okay. So your number three, daily access for up to eight employees, but six of those would be driving the active dump trucks.
Yeah, come and go. They're going to park.
So there might be two doing work and repair work inside the building.
Yeah, maybe. These are maximum numbers.
I, I, well, but that's what we want. We gotta have.
Yep, those are maximum numbers. Correct. Yes. It may be that two people come and go through the day, but um, we're asking for up to six as a potential on a day, on a given day.
And no, no further expansion of foot. Sorry, go ahead. No, no, it's important to figure, make sure you guys are on the same page. So as for us too.
They were just asking if a truck leaves earlier, if that's going to cause concern, if somebody shows up early to work and they're heading out early, is that going to cause a concern?
Morning?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, earlier than seven.
What's a shift? There's, so seasonal, I would assume, right? Yeah. Yeah, no, out of honesty, we're just trying to figure that out. When, when would be our earliest shift? Okay.
I just said, if we, the shop itself, we can obviously never use it between the seven and seven. I can.
Yeah.
That can be shut down, but it's just that the truck leaves a little bit before that seven. I just don't want. Just to go to work.
Yeah, I, they, I, I think people show up to work before business hours. That, that's the concern that I'm hearing is that um, somebody might show up to work early and we don't want to be back uh, in front of the enforcement.
Well, I, I think the question is.
Yeah.
Do, you know, do the drivers show up for work, fire up the truck? And the backup beepers are sounding and so forth before seven o'clock.
No, and one of the conditions could be to back vehicles in at night. So that way you're not hearing that in the morning because it'd be less disruptive in my mind at night. So that could be a part of the conditions that are, that are put in place if you wanted to do that. Um, it, obviously a vehicle has to go forward and backward to get in and out of the site without uh, unless we had a big loop. And we, we don't want to change the character of the site. So if we can back them in at night and pull them out in the morning, um, that as a given rule, that, that makes sense to me to eliminate that backup beeper.
Well, perhaps people would be upset at night. So you might think about your neighbors and see, see what their concerns, see what their preference.
Yeah, that's a good point. If you want to ask for a show of hands to, of those that are here, that's, that's more than, but uh, I, 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 I'm proposing a fifty fifty match in the application. I didn't propose that just because it didn't, didn't come to my mind. Um, but I, I think if it's a backup beeper, it's going to be for the matter of uh, thirty seconds while they're pulling out of a spot. It's not going to be a continual beeping noise. Um,
It, it shouldn't ever be in the morning.
Yeah, to disrupt anybody.
So that's the nature of your current business, right? So that those, those hours, but what if you, you got a job and that those hours might want to shift?
We'd have to be back in front of you to modify anything that's approved tonight. Or as part of the application.
So does seven, we have seven to seven. So does that sound reasonable?
Those are business hours. What their hesitation was just because if somebody shows up a, a little bit early, if they don't want to be a get a violation letter. And I think that the spirit and intent, it's no different than Home Depot starts at a certain time. They're, they're going to start at that time. You, you may see an employee in ten, fifteen minutes early. Um.
Well, the trigger will be when the complaints start coming in.
Correct. Yes. And if it's a continual daily thing, we can talk about it, but it's, it's not something I, I don't think it's going to be a continual daily thing.
Yes, to, to uh, bring it back around to the shooting range, uh, reference from earlier. I've been to a number of shooting ranges around the country and sometimes we, we're allowed to start shooting until you know, we, we run a bit like a state magical, whatever. You can't shoot till.
Oh, we, we know where everybody. Everybody knows we're here.
Half of here. I mean, we're right on Hoover. We own like two Hoover and it's, it's in the house.
So my point there was that there's restrictions. It might be in those cases, sometimes it was nine o'clock in the morning. You couldn't shoot before that law.
And so he goes till nine at night.
Well, yeah, I get it. Yeah. So the point there is if, if it's, if it's seven o'clock and you guys start up at six forty-five, then you're, you need to start at seven. Sure. That's what it might be. If, if that's what we're going to put in here, then that's, that's what it would have to be.
That's when the trucks are going.
Well, making, making noise.
Yeah. Six thirty. We, if we went.
Six thirty sound better?
Yeah.
Just, just if it does, then let's, let's go with that then.
He, he doesn't want to bind his business, but that, the real, reality is this is a seasonal business. He's going to have bigger jobs and smaller jobs. So the idea is they don't want to get into trouble.
Well, I would rather.
I guess my network is you talking about?
Because they're talking about seven AM. These guys are saying, well, your guys might get there early. It started at six thirty.
I would rather have a realistic.
We don't want to say.
So that we're not bouncing up against.
I can't get any conversation.
I'm sorry. So to the, to uh, Kyle's question about seven versus six thirty, uh, my view is you know, if you think your expe, if your expectation is stated, and so this will get back to if there's complaints, it'll be seven o'clock typically before they're firing off and, and leaving. But for the purpose of what is documented, if six thirty suits you. Uh, but but the, but I don't know how to, how to skinny that down. I mean, if, so now if at six thirty, we're getting complaints. Well, we haven't kind of done our job, but I uh, I guess I would prefer to leave it at seven. Take, take the risk. I would prefer, leave it at seven. Take the risks of how it, if we're, you know, if we start, if we don't get any complaints, fine. If you guys have some mornings where you have to start at six thirty, if that triggers complaints, well, then we're going to have to have a conversation. Because if it triggers complaints of any, any size or more than one nuisance complaint, then this is a problem. And we got to address it, right?
Totally respect where you're coming from, and that makes sense. Yes.
So I'm trying to put some common sense or practicality in here, but also have something that we can say is you know, was good intent on the seven to seven.
I think seven and seven came from other uh, conditional use applications, and that's why I found it to be suitable.
I think that's pretty typical to be honest with you.
Yep, I believe so as well.
So I, I'm that, I mean, that satisfies me. Does that behavior satisfy you? I mean, that mechanism?
I believe so. You guys felt comfortable with it? Yep.
I, like I said, I, I've been dwindling their use down, so I, I, to some level, they're, they're committing to bind themselves into some, some stuff to make sure that it works for you guys and for.
I can, I can see that here.
Neighbors respected that they could do six thirty in the future. Maybe they'll go around to neighbors, we'll come back to you with the six thirty. But I, I think with what's here, this is consistent with what you guys have approved in the past. And I not say you guys, but uh, the township in general.
Well, I think that the whole six thirty to seven thing, for me, that means a little more seasonal. I mean, in the summertime, you probably want to get started a little bit early, seven, six thirty, something like that. But maybe in the wintertime, dark, you know, maybe don't want to get going until eight. I mean, I don't know, but.
But that's their choice.
Right, right.
We're just trying, we're trying.
Understanding of all this, I mean, this looks like there's a lot of times where nobody's even there. This isn't there's not people flying in and out of here. There's not a big traffic, you know, trucks might leave in the morning, come back. I mean, and Roger can contest to it. He's outside all the time. I, I, you know, I stop up. There's hardly any, like, there's a lot of times there's nobody even there. It isn't like it's you know, come and go all day long or anything. I mean, I think there's a misconception of that. There might not even be any trucks work. You know, uh, you know, especially in the, in the, in the winter. But I mean, there's, there's very, very minimal traffic here. I mean, that, I mean, you might leave it, and it isn't, the trucks aren't even, a lot of the times, um, you know, unless they're doing some agricultural stuff, you know, um, they're not even, you know, they might be in Delaware or, you know, wherever. But this isn't very high traffic, like as far as people coming in and out. I mean, very, very minimal. I mean, and I, I think that the, the neighbors that are you know, to the north of me, you know, can contest to that. I mean, there's, you know, a lot of the times it's just me running in and out, doing, you know, whatever. I got all kinds of stuff stored in there, you know, different, the non-relating to, you know, truck stuff. And you know, it's, it's very minimal. Like, you know, I, I think that this is very scary looking, you know, but it is not this big. You know, I'm not FedEx. You know, we're not, you know, we're not running in and out of there all day long, all night, or you know, whatever. So
so from, yeah, so let's, I'd like to talk just a little bit about, you know, safety and environmental. You know, because your number two, your number two was traffic and access. Okay. And, and all I would say, I mean, this would be an area to get, you know, the fire chief involved to, you know, just look at how the maintenance of the road is along Harlem. So you've got the best visibility possible of a, a truck coming out. Uh, the people, you know, drivers on Center Village can see, you know, what, what's coming. But I think we need to have something written in here. I mean, we could either put it in here, you know, now, but you know, the management of, you know, any hazardous materials, you know, you need to have a hazardous, you know, sort of an EPA hazardous. management of, you know, any hazardous materials, you know, you need to have a hazardous, you know, sort of an EPA hazardous materials plan as such. I mean, we did this with the guy at the end of uh Harlem Road at the jog of Gorsuch that's built the hole down there that's just doing some automotive. You know, he put in a retention bay and liquid retention so that if he had a leak of oil tanks and that kind of stuff, they couldn't get to the groundwalk to to the creek. So somehow we need to have some language.
Yeah, and and the commitment to any of those activities will be inside the building. This building's been used for chemical containment in the past since the sixties. Um, there are some measures already in place, but if you'd like somebody to.
I'm just saying, you know, operation is based on review by the fire chief.
That's yeah, yeah. And that's what I'd recommend as well. I do think that's a great.
I didn't see that in here, Joe.
No, um, I I was in my testimony today, um.
Right, I heard you say.
We had talked about the idea of trying to preserve access for the fire department, assuming that that would be a requirement of.
For firefighting.
Correct, yes.
Well, that's key as well.
Yeah, we'd be happy to get site. What I would recommend is uh site plan and inspection uh from the fire department as being a condition of approval. Uh, we can include those in in the materials that we pass on to the zoning inspector.
Yeah.
Signify that we've satisfied your requirements.
Mike, is that Mr. Cannon, is that, I mean, that's consistent with what we've done on some others, right? To get the fire chief involved to approve a containment.
Yeah. Be involved if he's going to have a business.
Yes. Yeah. I still have personally some hesitation about this just because of the the history that led us to here. But I also respect the approach set forward here to run this in an operational manner that is works out well for both. You you keep saying win-win. I'm not sure where the win is for Harlem Township, but I'm sure we'll find one in here somewhere.
I'm sure there's some tax base on this building that will continue to.
We tax this thing better, so.
And I I will.
Had a lot of my questions answered.
I will say I met Derek.
Keith to the, you know, to the what what was A on that list?
Was objectionable. Listen, that's objectionable.
That's objectionable. I mean, I don't I don't know how to make an objection, objectionable assessment.
Well, we we did hear some testimony tonight that the weeds were up and the trash was out and.
Previously, well, no doubt. I mean, I drive by this three, three or four times a day. So I mean, it's 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 not been a it's better. It's it's better.
If I if I think that we're on the thing here.
Right, and we said a number of a number of these items just really do not apply, right? So it really comes down to the you know, objectionable one.
And I mean, it doesn't meet five, it can't meet. Uh, it's kind of like I'm looking.
I mean, it's got to be, yeah, all right, but you know, okay.
That's that's kind of where I'm looking at right now. I don't know. Yeah.
So in your mind, you think that one's still that's the is a dis- tosses the
Yeah.
The vote?
That that could very well. But being a less objectionable nature, I mean, that's 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 very, and that's and that's you know, there's no set in stone way to to figure that out.
Well, we had three neighbors going in and saying that they don't object to it.
True.
I think that holds a lot of weight.
And they did say it was it was.
It was better off now than it was when.
But doesn't mean, but I'm saying it doesn't mean because Mike didn't cite him before he sold it, that it was still didn't, it wasn't, it didn't meet the zoning standard because of the the weeds and the trash and and the other stuff. I mean, he wasn't getting complaints, but weeds and trash don't make noise.
Right.
So, you know, it.
So one of the other aspects of the je- objectional nature was all the noise complaints we heard in the previous hearing. And you've alluded to those being during that construction period. In your current operations that you guys don't believe that you're making all those those same types of noises that we're going to get complaints, and you don't believe you're going to get those complaints in the future. Does that sound accurate?
I believe there are other activities around this property that are generating noise. I I think you will continue to get complaints, but I do not believe that they are from this property.
Well, I don't mean that we they won't be attended to by the zoning inspector too, you know.
Sure. I I just, I don't want to allude you to the fact you're not going to get complaints. I think there there's the the there've been people pounding on metal objects around this property uh as part of other business activities and is nothing to do.
Yeah, we're we're kind of know about that.
Yeah, it has nothing to do with what what you have in front of you today.
Right.
Um, and I I was going to stipulate to to as far as peace of mind, um, this truck traffic's going to be here, whether it's Derek's business or not. Um, I was going to say this earlier in my testimony. He he's working for people that are building homes. Um, he's working for people that are are already doing construction projects here in the township. So you're actually generating less traffic with having this use in the township. If that gives you peace of mind as well, uh, may not be the less intense use the uh classifications, but I I do think that you were asking about what this gives to the township. I think this is a business that you that can serve Harlem Township.
Yeah, and 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 compared to the number of uh dump trucks going by my front door related to everything else that's going on.
Center Village is the back.
Six, six a day is is not my biggest problem on that front.
That's exactly what.
My concern is the onsite noise that could be generated. I don't, I think traffics are is a is is a non-issue from a.
I I will say one thing, when the diesel starts up in the morning, then especially in the wintertime, you have to warm it up before you can go. And that they're louder than a car. I know from the fact when working at the Princeton schools, we get neighbors complaining about school buses all the time. Sitting sitting and idling.
I think the complaints were the metal banging. Because the 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 people that were complaining, they're way south of me. So as far as the the starting and stuff of the trucks, I don't really think that was necessarily a lot of the issue. I think the the tailgates banging, you know, but you know, I have reserved that, you know, I I don't even know how that could have been. It might, you know. It just do not to interrupt because I don't want this to be open debate, but um the idea of trying to make you feel better about where we're headed. Um, there's four hundred feet of uh field uh south of his property. He's committing to move this use four hundred feet north of where it was before. So if there's idling trucks, it's going to be the people that were here tonight that are hearing them.
Yeah, on on Center Village, because it's coming forward towards the street. That's what we said from the crease, not the creek.
But the nice thing, the nice thing I will say is that uh it's screened behind the building and the building's going to buffer that noise a lot better than any trees ever would have.
Yeah.
Well. I don't know.
I'm on the. Does have anything, I mean, I I feel it's been a good discussion personally.
The one thing that bothered me is under the uh seven oh four and it's eleven maximum uh ten commercial partial deliveries a day. They're not going to be delivering anything, but it says maximum a day, and we're going to have sixteen or twelve of them anyway every day. Actually, that's for a week, isn't it?
Yeah, I think that's.
It's ten commercial uh to drop off for a week.
Amazon does that at my house daily. Yeah. Of the boxes.
Amazon's terrible.
Yeah. I don't, yeah, I think that's a.
We're okay there then?
I think that's a bigger issue that, yeah, yeah. That's a good question. Well, I think we'd have to write up a thing or two here.
Well, I'll make a make a motion we can vote on and we can accept or reject it, but that's where I'm going to stand right now.
Okay.
So I'd like to make a motion to reject HTVZA twenty five oh seven on the following grounds. I don't think it's a less objectionable nature. Maybe it's not expanding to additional portions, which is which is probably good to see. I don't think it's in character with the surroundings. And D, I don't think it will make it more in character. And E doesn't apply because it's not a twenty five percent greater expansion. So because it doesn't pass all five, I think two of them are definitely it's it's a lot of less judgmental nature, and it's not in character with the surroundings. I I I I vote to reject it. That's my emotion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Okay, no second?
Well, I'll second it. We can have discussion.
Okay, we have a second and we have a discussion.
Forward here, but well, I'll tell you what, I I the only the only one, I I don't know what the surround, I mean, when I look around Harlem Township, I'm not sure I could describe what the nature of the character of the surrounding areas are. I mean, and I and you guys need to understand, we're we're trying to have Harlem become a more attractive place in general for people to live and to call them themselves, you know, home. Uh, having said that, we got plenty of work to do around here, and Mike has been on it. Uh, and so what we're trying not to do is ex, you know, extend on out more objectionable kind of environments. But my opinion after this discussion is that and I know we we set some precedent with this, but with the specifics of this and with what you're committing to do in the operating guidelines in your proposal, uh, I'd have a I I don't know how I could make an argument that this is uh not in not consistent with the surroundings and 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 so I wouldn't be in agreement with that, I guess. So that's my view right now.
I might add on a little bit to that. The the nature of the property we've we established in the past, in the past hearing that it did do industrial type use. And so more industrial type use, that's not much larger than that would tend to be in that same nature, I I would think. And if it was in bad repair before, if there were things that were dumped on the property before that's been cleaned up, I would believe that this would be uh bringing us closer to to uh being more in character with the surroundings. And probably the charter that Harlem Township looks after, right? So so that's I just add that in there, discussion point.
Just for purposes of the record, I'm sorry, just for purposes of the record, there was a motion. Was there an official second?
I made an official second. We're having the discussion to the motion.
I'm just trying to clarify for the record.
No, no, I understand. Yes.
We're trying to do it right.
That's where we are.
Good for you.
The other discussion.
For me, I see where uh Mr. Neff here has actually improved the property. So to me, it's it is less objectionable than what it was. The parameters of what he wants to do with his business, I don't see whether that's going to be a negative impact on the neighborhood or on the township.
Okay, any more discussion?
If this were if this were going into my neighborhood, I'd completely object. Because my other neighbors would have shown up and we would have done everything we could to stop this. But since nobody objected, I'm going to have to go for it. I'm going to have to say, oh, I I vote against.
Closed. So so can we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes.
Yes.
Before I do the roll call vote, I don't know if there's something that Corey would need to clarify, is a no vote against that, a yes vote to it?
Can you make the motion again?
I I made a motion to reject the 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 thing, so to 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 uh a yes vote would be to agree to reject it, a no vote would be not to to go against my motion, so whichever.
And if you vote against the motion, then that would be allow another motion to be made. So this is just based on the.
That's kind of what I want to clarify again was we were rejecting one and we would have to make another one. I just wanted to make sure for the record.
You're right on the mark, Ashley.
Perfect, okay. So Keith made the motion, Steve seconded roll call vote, Kyle Ferris.
Uh, I'll vote no.
Steve Eisenbrow.
No.
Keith Campbell.
Yes.
Bill Gallagher.
No.
Amy Richardson.
No.
So the motion did not pass?
Motion did not pass.
Okay.
Back square ones.
Yeah. But now we might have to see how.
That was the way to get us to that point, so. I haven't written a motion out, but how do we do a motion that uh takes into account what we talked about getting the you know, the approvals and tying in the fire department and environmentals and so can we make it subject to approval by the zoning inspector that meets? Well, how much more do we need? Or should we be adding more conditions into this thing?
So the zoning resolution says the Board of Zoning Appeals may impose such requirements and conditions as they may deem necessary for the protection of adjacent properties and the public interest. Um, whatever that means is up to the board.
Right.
So if there are specific things that you all discussed, like with the fire department and environmental things, I would suggest outlining those in the motion uh so that it's clear to the applicant that if they do get approval based on certain requirements that have to meet, that they know what those requirements are. Uh, what those requirements are and who gives the approval of that, I guess would be up to this board to decide. So if it's up to, for example, the fire department to sign off on A, B, and C, I would put that in your motion. If it's uh subject to the approval of the zoning inspector getting uh whatever documents might be needed for environmental purposes, whatever it is, I would just make sure that's clear in your motion so that that is clearly outlined to the applicant so they know how to proceed.
You know, see, we we made a number of commitments in the text. If you could just generalize, say, subject to the commitments made in the application and the testimony, that's what I would typically assume.
Yeah, so maybe the cleanest way is you have the proposal proposal in front of you.
Yes.
I would say if there are things in that proposal that you want to take it out, put that on the record. If there are things you want added to that as a requirement or your approval, add that in.
Yeah.
So other, so that the applicant knows, okay, what we tendered to this board is good minus this portion of it, adding this portion of it. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think, well.
Fair as mine.
Yes, yeah. Well, you want me to take a shot at it?
Go. Yeah, um, we'll have to, do you have a an extra blank copy of the proposal? Andy?
Can I still?
Yeah, or just an extra.
Write it in.
I just want to make a copy there into the record. So we have.
There there is a an itemized list. If you're going to add additional numbers, it might be appropriate just to add them submitted updated text, but page four has enough.
I just want to make sure we're working off one the same document. Yeah, we don't get one version later than the other, yeah.
So, I mean, to start, are you going to try to capture some of this or do I need to write it? So I guess uh I would motion that we approve the, is this a request? What's this called?
Application.
I approve, yeah, I I who we approve application HTBZA twenty five dash oh seven NEF as discussed this evening. Okay, so approve it consistent with the proposal provided to us titled substitution of nonconforming use NEF Trucking Inc. that was submitted on August eighteenth, twenty twenty five, location twelve one one six Center Village Road, Westerville, Ohio, to the Board of Zoning Appeals. One-one-six Center Village Road, Westerville, Ohio, to the Board of Zoning Appeals. I don't, so pause. I didn't see anything in here we were taking out. Right? I didn't, we, we didn't, we did not modify hours of operation after that discussion. We have not taken any issue. It is. Six trucks, two in service and that spelt, you know. Overnight storage of up to eight dump trucks in a, okay. But how do, yeah, but that's. Six operating daily though.
Correct.
Correct? So we are going to modify number, uh, two. So it's, it, well, no, maybe not. It's overnight storage of up to eight dump trucks. Out and, and access for employees, signatures, and regular businesses.
Like I said, you may want to say subject to the testimony as well, but if there's.
Yeah, but it would be, you know, if we made it number eight, let's just say.
Correct, yeah.
Six dump trucks will be operating daily. In this, uh, in this business.
Yeah, I got, I got a problem with that because if he's got two trucks down. And down the road, he gets all eight of them running. He's going to be running eight trucks.
No, but we're going to.
Just leave it at eight. Six down, two, two, or two down and six running, just leave it at eight, I think. Cause that's how it's going to work out.
That's more practical, well.
That's way more practical.
Yeah, well, I'm okay with that.
Let's go with eight.
Well, then it's, okay, so then outdoor overnight storage for up to eight dump trucks and designated. Screened. So we might say. Overnight. What if we said daily operation? Of eight dump trucks as well as overnight storage. Of eight dump trucks, yeah? So we will, okay, so we're going to modify the mo, the, you know, add to the motion, the modification of item two, page four. To recognize daily operation of eight dump trucks. Okay, I'd be correct. If we can get the language right. So no extra number eight. Yeah, and then moving, okay. Continuing with additional safeguards. We will. Expect an annual review. Of the business by the fire chief. For operational safety purposes. Those would consist of. Parking, parking arrangements for proper firefighting. And management of hazardous waste. I'm, I'm waiting.
What was?
Firefighting on the property. As well as. Supervision of proper procedures. For hazardous waste and containment, containment thereof.
Bases hazardous materials.
Hazardous materials.
I'm not sure that we can direct the, uh, fire chief. I mean, we, we do.
No, well, I would, well, I would, but, but I would say, you know, the fire chief in coordination with the zoning director. Supervision of the zoning director.
You was okay with that?
I mean, Mike would be the one who would get him it. Essentially, it gives Mike the responsibility. To work, to get him involved, to work with you to that end. For safety and environmental practices. That's my goal. I'm not trying to make this more difficult.
Usually they'll do an annual, um, he'll just get on a.
Fire safe.
Cycle and yeah, he'll, they'll show up one day.
Well, we're, we're just saying, we're just saying, uh, an annual fire.
Yep.
You know, and a new, yeah, an initial. Operating review and annual review for safety and environmental.
Provide evidence of that to the zoning inspector. That makes sense.
Those are my points.
Yeah, would you want to add that as item seven on this, so?
Well.
Additional safeguards or just when I?
I think just in the language here that we just used. I guess, you know, we could designate that we will add language as item seven. For safety and environmental. And I guess we don't have to wordsmith this here tonight.
That's, that's under the additional safeguards for proposed activity.
Right.
Item seven, okay.
Run my screen.
Anybody else have anything they want to bring in?
That's my, that's my motion. Anything else you'd like to see included in the motion? Okay, is there a second?
Can we read the motion?
Yeah, let's. Can you take a shot at it?
Yes, when was the application submitted?
August eighteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Motion to approve HTBZA twenty-five dash zero seven NEF Trucking, Inc. Application as submitted on August eighteenth, twenty twenty-five with modifications to items. Page two, or sorry, item two, page four, daily operation of. Eight dump trucks and eight overnight storage, overnight storage of eight dump trucks. Initial fire. Review and annual review of business by fire chief for operating.
Go ahead.
For operational safety purposes. And proper firefighting on a property as well as hazardous material storage and disposal.
Based on the conversation, uh, that eight trucks, should the word maximum be added? That it's clear what the.
Yes.
References.
It should. Thank you, Corey.
Of course.
Did you reference?
Yes, she did, yeah, it's, yes.
The application submitted on eighteen with the modifications.
Okay, I'm going to submit this copy, the official copy. I signed it there.
That's the motion. We have a second.
I second.
We have a roll call vote, please.
Motion to second that, sorry.
Discussion on the motion first.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry. Yeah, we have discussion. I'm, my mistake. But Steve motion.
Deep motion.
I made the motion.
Any second.
Discussion.
I still had the discussion of when I said that. Being more intense operation, so that's, that's my big objection. That's my feeling.
Any other? Roll call vote.
Kyle Ferris.
Hi.
Steve Eisenbrow.
Hi.
Keith Campbell.
Nate.
Bill Gallagher.
Hi.
Amy Richardson.
Hi.
The motion's passed.
Thank you. I, I will say from the onset, I told Derek that you guys were the best board to come in front of for this application and I, I have to say. Um, I, I was only picking on you for the fair and unbiased because that's critical to this process and you guys demonstrated that very well. Uh, and I thank you for that.
Well, I mean, the nature of it is a little bit adversarial and we want to get out there and have that discussion points.
I can appreciate that.
I, I stand by my opening comments of that better served within the zoning commission. But for the reasons that Jim also articulated, but it was a good discussion. And you guys, uh. Okay, so here we are.
Thank you very much. We very, very much appreciate that and have a great evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to, uh, bring the, uh.
Close the hearing.
The hearing to a close of HTBZ. A twenty-five dash oh seven NEF.
Second.
My second.
All favor. So the hearing for HTBZA twenty-five dash oh seven NEF is closed. Back to regular business.
This will be a moot point, I hope.
You're done.
All right, so care on our business. Do we have any new business, any new applications?
No, please no. Too many.
We've approved our, uh, our meeting minutes. Um, do we have any reports? I don't think we're having reports tonight.
Hey, Corey. Got a minute?
Our next, uh, meeting date is set for October twentieth, twenty twenty-five. Next meeting day is twenty twenty-five, October twentieth. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Augen, will you adjourn the meeting?
The second.
I second.
All favor.
All right.
All right, the meeting's adjourned at nine thirty-four.
That's always the easiest.
Corey, thanks for.
Yeah, it's quick and easy.
Um, yes, that's probably going to be mooted.